Thank you so much for putting these bills in for us. A bit under the weather today, so. I'm gonna talk a little bit about the TMA, the Three Mountain Alliance. This is what kind of brought us all together earlier in the year. It started with Pu Makahala, that area, by Kulani Prison. And much of that area has been put into conservation years ago. Just very few small parcels left in that area. So our concern was that we're gonna have no access to Mauna Loa for hunting anymore. So I'm gonna read what exactly the Three Mountain Alliance is. It works through partnering to expand watershed protection and management to over 1 million acres of volcanoes of Mauna Loa, Kilauea, and Kualaoa. Thus making it the largest cooperative land management effort in the state of Hawaii. That's a million acres that they have. So you can see why we're got our fancies in the mind when we're fighting over 5,000 acres. And they have millions, and just this one area has a million. Okay, and the next thing is that Pu Makahala, the management plan, is aligning with the priorities and actions of the rainfalls of the forest. That was Avro Promis' management goal, to protect and maintain Pu Makahala, the natural, cultural, and geological sources. See, what many people don't know is, like, ungulate management, this is stuff that they've done already. In 1991 to 2003, NARS, which is a natural area reserve staff and partners, constructed nine fenced ungulate-proofed management units totaling 9,600 acres in Kulani and Pu Makahala section of reserve to protect the NAR from furrow ungulates. NARS and TMA, the Three Mountain Alliance staff, completed furrow pit control in these nine units. These units have had all furrow pits removed and are currently pit-free. And this is the part they got me. Weed survey and management are a critical second step in following the removal of pigs. Weed management within Pu Makahala NARS is focused on ungulate-proofed fenced units. With weed sweeps, all target non-native species are mechanically or chemically controlled within the fenced units. And I brought this up earlier in the year, that they're using chemicals in our watershed. Five to 10% of the watershed is basic weeds. So if you took that 10,000 acres and you're looking at 1,000 acres that's been poisoned and perpetuated, because you know how your basic plants are. You gotta poison it, you gotta poison it, you gotta poison it. So these are some of the concerns, that, you know, it sounds good on paper and everything, and we try to get information of what type of herbicide that they're using, and, oh, it's safe, don't worry about it. You know, that's our watershed. You're saying that the pigs are causing a problem. And then you remove the animals and you're having to poison the forest. And that's it.
Thank you very much for your testimony. If you could say hello to Gary Nilo, we have Colin Harden to speak on Bill 260. Comment, resolution 256, 265, and 263 in support. Good morning.
The pictures from the next thing. Comments on Bill 260 about the Game Management Advisory Commission. I support cultural and traditional gathering rights and responsible hunting. This commission proposal seems to come from hunters wanting more of a say in state decisions. So they may be happy to hear that a staff person with Department of Land and Natural Resources told me DLNR is working on some kind of video conferencing so people can testify from neighbor islands at the Board of Land and Natural Resources meetings. If this commission goes forward, I hope it will include people who have traditional, cultural, and practical knowledge, plus people who have scientific knowledge about unintended consequences and long-term impacts of human actions. Tony was talking about where you take the pigs out, the invasives start going. Well, if you have the pigs there, they also eat the native species. The native species are not well-defended, having not evolved with big hairy things with sharp teeth. So it's, you need to look at everything. Also, previous meetings on hunting, I heard testimonies saying that aerial shooting harms the polilla more than army helicopters. But I went through the EIS with a fine-tooth comb. Army helicopters fly by night, not just by day. They were gonna fly an average of six-plus hours a day for four weeks in a row, whereas the aerial shooting, the dates I found, were like one or two days at a time. Sometimes half that time is spent in salvage. The army helicopters, they do reconnaissance 100 to 500 feet up. They do abort-and-try-again landings. They do multiple touch-and-goes. They hover at three feet. And they can fly at 200 feet for more than half a mile around each landing zone. Also, the noise impacts when they're evaluated, they use averages. Day-night, even annual averages. The army helicopters are scheduled during breeding or pledging season for several birds, and a bat are at risk. And helicopters didn't remove animals that impact native species. So you do need, you need people with on-the-ground experience, like hunters. You also need people who know the big picture and the facts. You know, the other long-term facts. Next thing, supporting resolution 256 about Waikaku'u. The previous picture was Waikaku'u. When you folks talked about this at the June 18 Finance Committee, some council members didn't want to set the precedent of bypassing PONK, the Public Access Open Space and Natural Resources Preservation Commission, by approving this resolution. So it seems like we need a procedure for urgent situations where land might be developed or sold before it can be saved. And then one approach discussed June 19 was amending this resolution so it would only become effective if PONK put Waikaku'u on their priority list. And another approach is you might say that only non-county funds, maybe like federal or legacy lands, could be used to acquire lands only approved by county council, but not yet by PONK. And that way landlords would at least know the county's interested, and they might hold off selling or developing for a little while. And this urgent situation came up because it didn't go before the planning commission. So the public had no input. And this is an amazing area. So I hope the council will look at the procedures, have it go before the planning commission. As you know, Waikaku'u is a pristine old growth native forest that harbors native birds, is a watershed area, and it might have rurials. In addition, it could be a living laboratory to educate future generations. I hope you'll save it. Next issue, this is Pahu'i Bay, and that's the picture there. And kind of an iconic image of what happens when lands are not protected. That's some of the wonderful petroglyphs. There are hundreds of them down there with bulldozer tracks going over the petroglyphs. This is what happens. Short term, I'd like to see the county purchase a conservation easement to prevent development. And long term, I'd like to see the national park acquire it because they have the ability to manage and protect extraordinary resources down there. And the last thing, resolution 263, supporting a constitutional amendment to reverse the Citizens United decision and clarify that corporations are not people. And you can see we need this because people are, you know, buying the election with billions of dollars right now. I hope you will continue to support this. And I heard that later this month, the US Senate will be holding hearings on this. So there is, we're making some progress. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Let's go back to Kona. Karen, your next two testifiers, please.
Thank you, I just have one more testifier. It's Charles Flaherty. He will speak on resolution 263 and Bill 260.
Thank you, good morning.
Hello. Hello, Chairman Higong and members of the county council.
Hello.
I first would like to speak about Bill 260. I've been working for several years now with local hunters on this issue. And it's been extremely frustrating for them. I've witnessed how they're scheduled for meetings with different government agencies only to have the process just dropped. I've seen many petitions with hundreds of signatures on them, time and time again, and yet nothing happens. So I very much support Bill 260. I would also like you to know that the Association of Hawaiian Civic Clubs, at their 2010 convention, supported a concept such as this. They passed a resolution that reflected the intention of Bill 260 at their annual national convention held here in Kona. On resolution 263, it was disturbing to see an editorial yesterday, and was quite today, on this issue, where an editorial from the Chicago Tribune basically presented a lot of wrong information. I have a book here called First Tycoon, a book written about Cornelius Vanderbilt. Cornelius Vanderbilt was the first tycoon. He was the first person to really use corporations to create private wealth. I'll read a couple of passages from here to give you an idea. By 1859, he operated almost entirely through corporations. He proved himself as an expert in using the stock market to concentrate capital, or venge himself on his enemies and emerged as a master of corporate structure. And the reason I'm reading this to you is because it seems that the Supreme Court, and today we have forgotten that corporations were a rare bird until around the time of the Civil War. As late as the Civil War, a strong sense lingered that corporations were public bodies, chartered to channel private capital toward public ends, specific, limited ends. Starting in 1863, Vanderbilt would progressively destroy the last vestiges of this long-held conception. Drawing on his extensive experience with the corporate form, he would strip it of his remaining public character as he finished the long process of converting it into a vehicle for private gain alone. And finally, during the Civil War, Americans began to fear that rampant corruption threatened democracy itself. As the federal budget grew, the scope of graft seemed to swell as well. Profiteering of military contracts seemed to run rampant. Well, there isn't a day that doesn't go by that we don't read about a military contractor that has engaged, that is engaged in corruption. And as global corporations, the stockholders of corporations, it's very hard to say anymore that there are American corporations. And when you see the, when you see our space program being privatized, when you see our mail service being privatized, which is one of the original purposes of the federal government, you begin to understand that the idea of corporations being natural persons is a severe threat to our democracy. So I very strongly urge you to pass this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Let's go back to Gary Nilo and bring our next two testifiers. We have Michelle Sylvester and Donald Wessels Jr. If you could come forward to the table, please. So our testifier at the table, Michelle Sylvester, will be speaking on Bill 260 in support. Good morning.
Good morning. Aloha, councilmembers. I'd just like to thank all of you for all your support in these past few weeks that we've been here. We really appreciate it. And I'd also like to apologize to this for I didn't mean to upset you or anything when I said anything about environmentalism, if I did offend you. I am here today to support Bill 260, the Game Management Advisory Commission. I'd like to read a quote. "To waste, to destroy our natural resources, to skin and exhaust the land instead of using it so as to increase its usefulness, will result in undermining, in the days of our children, the very prosperity which we ought by right to hand down to them and provide and develop." This is a quote from Theodore Roosevelt. It was a message, it was a message to Congress in December 1907. So he had the insight as to where things are going way back then. The original conservationists were hunters and gatherers. They saw the decline in market game. People crossed state lines to get market game. And they depleted most of the elk and deer, causing many species to extinction. It was the hunters who wrote laws to Congress to stop the taking of market game. A lot of people that have previously testified just wanted a chance to be heard. We want to conserve what we have, but we would also like to have our hunting, fishing, and gathering rights. If you look closely, DLNR, DLNR, NARS, and Nature Conservancy, they are under the guise of preservation and conservation. More land is being taken away and fenced or put off limits to all the people of Hawaii. What we enjoy as children and young adults will be something of the past, never to be enjoyed again. This is the reason we need a Game Management Advisory Commission. I would like to see the commission reactive with the other government agencies. I'm hoping, I'm hoping we can have the chance to have meaningful dialogue. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Our next testifier, Gary Nilo. President Gino Inosentio, come forward to the table, please. Our next testifier, Donald Wessels Jr., to speak on Communication 735, Resolution 263-12 in support. Good morning, sir.
Thank you. I applaud Councilperson Brittany Smart for the introduction of the resolution 236-12 that calls upon the United States Congress to pass and send the states for ratification and the legislaturemen to reverse Citizens United being a federal election commission and the corporations are not entitled to the constitutional protection of the rights of natural persons. I have been an advocate for any of corporate personhood for several years now. It is my belief that corporate personhood is deeply corrupted, disrupting Americans' political process and entrenching the power of an economic elite. It has been the cornerstone of the slow corporate takeover of America, of the American republic. Corporations as persons on a face of it is simply crazy. It's a quizzical reversal of logic that leaves you with your mouth open and scratching your head the first time you hear about it. Citizens United wasn't the first time the Supreme Court has made this insane assertion. Citizens United reaffirms precedent that corporations are persons, starting in 1886 with Santa Clara County in Southern Pacific Railroad. And money was declared by the Supreme Court to be political free speech in 1976 in Buckley versus Vail. America's democracy has been slipping away from us for quite some time now, and it has led to the unelected member, it was led by the unelected members of the US Supreme Court. The political doctrine that says somebody's property is a legal person is the fundamental reason why banks, students, and Wall Street have been bailed out while we are being sold out. Corporate personhood set the stage for our enslavement, and Citizens United has processed further over the edge of that abyss of corporate feudalism. The American republic has come to serve the corporation and its profits above all else, while leaving us in lurch. The primary purpose of all legitimate government is to serve, to protect living people, not large corporate institutions. The average living, breathing, working-class person cannot compete with the so-called free speech of multi-billion-dollar transnational property persons. So please, pass resolution 363-12, send a message to the US Congress that they must ratify the constitutional amendment reversing the Citizens United case and finally end the twisted doctrine of corporate personhood. Remember, slavery is legal fiction that a person is property. Corporate personhood is the legal fiction that property is a person. Let me repeat that. Slavery is the legal fiction that a person is property. Corporate personhood is the legal fiction that property is a person. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. If I could ask Abraham Sadek, he'd come to the table, please. Our next testifier is Gino Inosentio, to speak on Bill 260 in support. Good morning.
Mahalo, councilmembers. You know, if you looked at the picture previous to my being up here with the hapu, the 15 to 25-foot hapu stands, you know, that very same place that we went in one time back in the 90s to eradicate cattle and as well as pigs. They were there. I got pictures of it, also standing alongside of it. And you know, when you consider, oh, what is pristine? Those pristine conditions that the environmentalist wants to protect, okay? If you look at what pictures, and, well, first of all, how did those hapus get to be that tall if the pigs and the sheep and the goats and everything else was inside already? They created their own ecosystem, that's the answer. And the answer is their survival as well. They created their own ecosystem of survival. Another thing I wanted to mention is that, you know, if I hurt any environmentalist in any way, I'm a preservationist. I'm with, I speak for myself, not on behalf of the Native Hawaiians Start Preservation Council, with all of them. But I've been with them for about 10 years now. And basically, my objective is to preserve the lifestyle and the culture of our native Hawaiians, as well as peoples of these islands born in Great Lakes. And one of the things that I'd like to see is this council pass the bill regarding 260 to have our council members, excuse my council members, but our advisory commission be established. And the main reason is this, we have a lot of youth right now that's going out hunting, okay, without any licenses, without any kind of education, just because of the fact they want to go hunting. They're taking their grandparents' gun, or dad's gun, or whichever gun, just so that they can go out hunting. And when they get caught for trespassing, because they don't know the rules of law, and they get sent into juvie or whatever, the guns are confiscated, okay? And now this track record, okay, sticks with them, or criminal record sticks with them throughout their life. And now they start being able to, maybe someday, apply for a hunting license or even permit to carry a rifle or any kind of firearm to hunting is gonna be voided. Is gonna be denied, you know, this kind of stuff. So by establishing this council, we'd be able to become mentors as adults, become mentors of our youth, and be able to help them to find the right ways of going out and hunting and carry on their cultural heritage and practices as well, and their traditions. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. If I could ask Stephanie Salazar to come forward to the table. Our next testifier is Abraham Sadek. Sadek, thank you. To speak on resolution 262-12.
And Mr. Higong, I'd also like to add this, resolution 263-12.
Okay, very good.
I'm originally from Iran, and unless we have firsthand experience of many things in life, we will not really realize it when, for example, freedom is in danger. For us, for me, our security services, starting from the bottom all the way, local and international, doing their real job are our society's immune system. They protect us from danger. But there also, there is a side to that, that if they fail in that response, then they can become cancerous. For me personally, and I'm now, someone mentioned the FBI, it's great that we are gonna have a joint office here, but they also have to look, we have to have the power to look inside, to see how they themselves are doing their job. I came here in November of 2010, and when my family, my children, who are in Texas, asked me how Hawaii is, I said, "Well, I'm living in God's paradise and police departments help." And it has been two or 18 months of incessant, continuous physical and psychological torture with undercover, overcover agents, a woman just filing, informer filing a TRO. Nobody asked me anything about it, and I have ended up on the street since April 15. So I, and I, and I see police officers writing reports on my behalf. They don't show me what they have written. They complained against a man who harassed me and offended me to the police department. It's written on a piece of paper that says harassment, has no names on it. I go to the police department to get a copy of it. They say it's under investigation. We can't give it to you until it goes to the prosecutor's office. It goes to the prosecutor's office, and I say, "Okay, can I have to see what this particular officer wrote about me?" No. According to this particular law that they, Mr. Arius Kobogiri signed, we don't have to give you anything until one year from now. So when I finally got it on the 24th of February of this year, that police officer had turned everything around to the extent that I had become the aggressor. And regarding the FBI as well, I'm the founder, as an indirect result of the Iranian revolution, that I believed in wholeheartedly. For 20 years, I asked, and I'm not, and I searched, why is religion such a negative factor in our lives? In 1993, I started what I call in San Antonio, the Church of the Lord, Yahweh, God, Allah, true Islam. True Islam is a continuation of Christianity. Chapter 19 of the Quran is named after Mary. But anyway, I need, the police department has manipulated my life to the point of that in 15 months, I have moved, I have been moved, literally, five times. My computer is, I have no freedom whatsoever. This has been going on for 23 years. I just need your help. This morning, I sent you every member of the committee or the council, a multiple-page letter. I would appreciate your looking at it and making, helping me make this also a paradise of people and not just God. Regarding 263-12. I didn't, my dream of America has never been a house and a car and a job, although as an, those have been means to an end for me. My dream of America is for us never to fall from grace, as has been the faith of every civilization since the dawn of life, including my own country, my own native land of Persia. The greatness of America is that it gives opportunity to every individual, from the lowest to the highest level of society, that if they prove themselves, they can reach the highest point. A law cabin member becomes an icon. William Clinton, from the lowest level of the society, reaches its highest point. And when I was in San Antonio in early 50s, we had a restroom in front of the Alamo for the colored and the white. No one would have dreamt that in this country, when it is vital, when it is what it's supposed to be, an African-American reaches the highest level of society. And also the likes of Caesar Chavez, Martin Luther King, we need to preserve that. We need to take the money out of the system totally. You, Mr. Higong, with $2,000 or $3,000 in your coffer, hardly are gonna be, as much as you have been in the public eye, hardly are you gonna compete with $300,000 excess of a man who is incumbent. And when I go around the state, I, the only see, a name I see is Mr. Bill Hennoy. By the way, I filed a complaint against the police department with him several times. Last time, 26 was official. I don't think I'm gonna hear anything. This Citizens United is the greatest disaster in our history. It takes the, the greatest moment of my life. I tell you, I went over there across the street, and I didn't, at that time, I didn't know I was gonna be homeless for two and a half months. I said, "I wanna run for mayor." My God, that lady was so gracious, filled out all the forms. And in two days, I get invitations to attend meetings, and I said, "I'm sorry, I don't even have a car to get to your place where you are." So, but the fact that I could do that, the fact, it shows the greatness of our country. In Iran, you have to go through hell to, we have thousands of people applying, but a group decides whether this person is Islamic or not, so they cut them off. So we need to keep, we need to keep our dreams alive and prevent our security forces to gain power and destroy us from within. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your testimony. If I could ask Sandra Salazar to come to the table, please. Our next testifier is Stephanie Salazar, to speak on Bill 229 in opposition. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for the chance. I feel humbled because so many of the speakers are speaking about grand issues, and I really respect them for coming forward. I'm speaking about a neighborhood development. My name is Stephanie Salazar. I'm speaking on Bill 229, and I submitted my written testimony before the Planning Committee for its May 1st hearing. I've lived next door to the seven-acre-old Herosi Nursery, which is by the Hawaiian Poton Center for more than 25 years. I've seen flooding on the subject property through those years. I object to the application, which is now just for a five-year I object to the application, which is now just for a five-year time extension. The applicant has decided not to ask for exemption from the conditions H and I that have to do with drainage and road improvements. Now the developer only wants a five-year extension. But the developer has had time to do many of the improvements, but he has done nothing that I can see to move forward complying with his rezoning in the past five years. So what can we expect if he's given another five years? Based on the history of the last five years, perhaps we can expect mayhem. Look at the last five years. The developer grubbed and pushed rubbish and grubbed material into the flood area on the Makai end of his seven-acre property. This is down toward Panaeva on Kaha'opea. Then he demolished old Green Hilo Hospital on his land. This is when they built the veterans home. This hospital, I believe, was built in the nineteen fifties. And during those times, I believe they used asbestos and lead-based paint, and we know there was rebar in the concrete. While Mr. Yay, the attorney for the developer, testified at the June eighteenth planning committee that the developer met all the cleanup required by the Department of Health that has been done, this is not true. Three and a half years ago, the Department of Health wrote to the developer to say they noted that the cleanup and corrective actions were done to process the concrete that was dumped, but there is still rebar on the property in the rubble. And we fear there may be the remnants of asbestos and lead paint that was used in the nineteen fifties. And in the area, we have the Panaeva Wells, one and two, and we are in the watershed, which is part of our county water supply. If you give a five-year extension, can you impose conditions to do two things for Mr. Higashi? Remove the grub material from the channel and test the material from the old Hilo Hospital for contaminants of lead, asbestos, and rebar, and if necessary, remove the hospital fill. Thank you for taking the time for those who visited the site and looked into this issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hilo. Sandra Song is in court right now, so she's not here. So we'll move on to Russell Doyd to come forward. I could also ask Pat Pacheco as well to come forward. And after these two testifiers, we're going to take a five-minute break.
I haven't seen you in a long time. Must be twenty years I haven't seen you.
You see, we bring people together here at the Congress, boy. Our next testifier is Russell Doyd to speak on bill two two nine in opposition. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, everybody. I think maybe you've already seen me, but almost the energy, hopefully. I'm coming about zoning, we knew for the land. Just like you coming, first, like Stephanie said, with the rebar that the state said, no more, but still get the rebar because when Dennis came over there, we bring him in the river, he make Kelly go, they seen all the rocks they put him in, get iron, get any type of tree, tree stump in the river. And I make sure Kelly win see that. And even in the rebar, Kelly win tell, "Oh, if I kick that rebar, I will sue you." And then, only she said, "Oh, no, it's not Russell land." You know what I mean? So there is evidence that get rebar because Kelly said he will sue me when he kick him. You know what I mean? So, no can be no more rebar. Then, another thing is, when they bring the hospital, they change the elevation of the land. So now, the water used to divert down the center of the property. But when they free me by the hospital, it flow all the way down from the house now. Because where the river was in the center, they raise them so the water flow to the side. And then, on this last rain, I mean, notice, it flowed right on Calpear Street, down the road, and he know he been flowing in a flood ditch. Because right next to Calpear Street, there on flood drain. But since the elevation is so high, he passed the flood drain, and he just flowed right onto the Calpear Street. And on the bottom of Calpear Street, there will be pond top. And Stephanie, we take pictures of him, but we know more too fast for the pictures will come. But maybe by next council meeting, we can get pictures. And then, hopefully, you guys can do the right thing. See, like these corner guys, you guys stop shaking, you, these Hilo guys, they'll be shaking though. I hate to say it, but even if Kelly defends for, he come out and say, I guess I can come out and say too. You know what I mean? Because that's real Hawaiian, and they go tell a truth then. They not go beat around the bush. So, but you, you don't be worry, you stop shaking, and brother, stop shaking too. Usually, they block you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you, Mr. Hilo.
So, hopefully, all you guys can figure out everything. But maybe if you guys give him the stuff, maybe you can put stipulation that he put through all the no good thing to fix him, you know what I mean? No rebar, because when I grumble, me is nothing, he just tell a guy, nothing, because I am nothing. But you guys, when you guys go tell him do something, he gotta do it. You know what I mean? Okay, thank you.
One more testifier that we're going to take a five-minute recess. Our next testifier is Mr. Pat Pacheco to speak on bill two sixty. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, and all council members present this morning. I'm here on behalf of bill two sixty. The council has been very cooperative in passing the first hearing and the second hearing. I ask all of you to continue to support this bill to show that our taxpayers' money is being used the right and proper way, that the people of this island have a right to decide what is good for all and not just shut down their throats, that hunters should be on the Game Management Commission, and that scientists and biologists from the state of Hawaii should also be on this commission for born and raised here. That is, for living in this island and born here, the hunter, the fisherman, and the people who gather together know our land, our lifestyle. That is the way we live and the way we want to live, to share with each other and to live the real aloha spirit. Game management is like knowing fresh, knowing peak, knowing dominant. It's like in sports. You have a executive board or committee to handle complaints, protests, and this board decides on the rules and regulations that is in front of them. Their rules and regulations must be followed, but the DNR has not followed any one of them. This is why it's so important to have a game commission with hunters in there, so we can let them know that these are rules and regulations you must follow for the people, not just certain people, but all people. Government is for the people and by the people, not for self or for ego or for gain of power. Remember, the taxpayers' money supports and pays every one of us, every elected official, everybody that deals and works for the state, county, and federal. So let's work for the people with the money that you receive. They have, you get food on your table, do not take the food away from our table. This is why it's so important, so vital, that this game commission that has, should be adopted and passed, and the hunters be there. And we can take it to the hunters, and we can bring it back, and we can work together for all to benefit, not just certain people. Mahalo, and may God bless Hawaii. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. So we are going to take a five-minute recess. When we come back, we have four more testifiers before we take items on the agenda. We'll come back with Mr. Stephen Arugio after five minutes. We are in recess. Thank you.